I'll order this December 20th, 2021 city council meeting. All councils are present with the exception of Council Lyons, who is out ill tonight. Pledge of allegiance.
To the God of the United States of America, for which we are the republic, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, rules of order. We follow Robert's rules of order and any other rules that are set during the annual organizational meeting. Item four, adoption of minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council, November 15th, 2021, regular council meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item five, city manager's report.
Thank you, Chair Hamilton. Just real quick, a couple of reminders to folks that City Hall will be closing at noon time on Thursday for the employee holiday party, and we will be closed on Friday, the 24th, and Friday, the 31st, in recognition of the Saturday holidays of those weeks. Separately, but the transfer station as well will be closed on Friday, the 24th, Saturday, the 25th, Friday, the 31st, and Saturday, the 1st. So important that folks plan accordingly for those closures. And secondly, I just wanted to give the council a quick update. I gave some information to the finance committee, but just a quick update on the status of solar projects, our two solar projects, well, they're not ours, but that we've contracted with on the Mariahville Road. They are nearing completion and hoping to be online and connected to the grid through Versant by late January. And so shortly after that, we'll begin the process of earning the credits. And there is one hiccup that we've been working through right now, and it has to do with a billing issue with Versant and our streetlights. And so you'll hear more about that as we work through that process, but there's a potential that because they can't recognize through their billing process the kilowatt hours that is actually billed to the streetlights because the streetlights are not ours and there's other issues dealing with the billing, that we may have to begin the process without our streetlights on the credits for our sun rays agreement. So we are currently working with Sunrays to try and get that, and Versant as well, to try and get that situation squared away. And there are some options that we're taking a look at that I'll report more on that when I have more to tell you, but as of right now, late January, early February, we should be online with those two solar projects.
I thought we had the streetlights worked out in the contract. I remember talking about the streetlights, but what happened?
So, yeah, so the streetlights were part of the, you know, part of the breakdown for the two solar projects, and it wasn't until recently that the billing issue became a problem. And it's not just us, it's all streetlights for any of these NEB solar project agreements. So it has to do with the billing, it's an internal issue with Versant, and the contacts that we have from Versant have assured us that they're all over it, that they're working diligently to get it squared away and get it straightened out. The question is whether it happens in a timely enough fashion for us to be able to keep those on our list, because as it is right now, we have to remove them from our list that we submit to Versant. So there's some nuances that get a little bit tricky, but once I have some more specific information on what that's going to look like, I'll report that back out. That's all I have.
Any other questions? All right. Item six, committee reports. Any councilors attend any committees to report back?
Well, I did not attend a committee, but I did, I would like to thank the Recreation Committee, Gretchen Wilson, Kim Fitch, the City Hall staff, especially Tony Dyer, Jenna Richards, and everybody else that helped put the tree up. I'd like to also thank the Witham family, Hotel Group, and any other businesses and all the other businesses that helped make the Christmas tree lighting and the Christmas parade a huge success this year. Looking forward to doing it again next year. Thank you.
Council cap.
The Harbor Commission, we met, and basically, right now, just as of now, we're looking at the request for a proposal for a food vendor, and also looking at the possibility of trying to get the dredging done, so.
Any other committees? There are a couple of committees that I overlooked in terms of appointing membership to. One is the Emergency Medical Services Committee, and this committee will be focused on the ongoing discussions and planning around looking at whether the city will become a vendor or provide services, ambulance services. So I'll appoint Councilors Miller, Hanson, and Blanchett to that committee. And then the Capital Planning Committee, this is a committee that we established to help inform the city council in terms of looking at capital needs of the city over a five-year period to try to prioritize, and so that when the council gets the budget, there's also some additional information for that. And for that, I'll point myself, Council Blanchett, and Council Lyons. So those two committees will now be staffed, and the EMS will meet when they're ready to take the next step in terms of discussions. I believe that part of it was prompted, the county was looking at creating a service, but I understand that they've decided to pause that discussion, so I guess it will start from a clean slate, back to where we were before. Any questions?
Is it possible to have four council members on the EMS committee?
As far as membership, I don't believe we can assign more than three, but they're open, they're all public meetings, and you can certainly attend.
No, it's just that I've been working on it for two years now, and we were getting somewhere, and didn't realize there was going to be a change.
And I apologize, I was going by the, what was put out in terms of the request when the, I think Manager Moser had asked anybody that was interested, because it's changing a little bit of focus at, when that request came out, the county was looking at developing an ambulance service. This was a few weeks back, so that's what I went by. But again, the only reason that we can't have four is the voting.
That's fine.
Item seven, citizens' comments. This is a portion of the agenda where citizens can make comments on anything you'd like to discuss. If it's on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time, but if you'd like to speak.
Kara Romano, Director of Heart of Ellsworth, downtown organization. I'm here tonight to report on last month's event in downtown, the Downy Cider and Cheese Festival. This year was our fourth year, and as you'll, as councilors can see from the overall report that Tony helped me pass out tonight, this is, like I said, it's our fourth annual and developed by community member Todd Little Sebold. The event took place in downtown, and this past year, and also last year, was a hybrid version of the virtual and live events, and there were ticketed and free events for the community to attend. There was a free historic talk, a guided virtual tasting, and a pre-sale of cider and cheese bags, and there was a festival market that happened with local and some statewide vendors from around the state that happened in Franklin Street parking lot, and there was free cider pressing and demos and live music that happened around the city. The event's purpose is to celebrate a revival of two traditional foods, hard cider and cheese, and the Downy Cider and Cheese Festival honors the rich tradition of Maine's historic apple industry while highlighting Ellsworth's connection to its roots. In the early 1900s, Ellsworth had 24 working orchards and shipped apples, cider, and vinegar for food preservation all over the world. Today, the event is the only of its kind in the state and has put Ellsworth on the map, earning the distinct attention and support of the Maine Office of Tourism, as well as all of the budding cider and cheese producers in the state and beyond. So some of the goals of the program is to create a downtown destination event during the shoulder season, highlight an aspect of Ellsworth's history, creating a sense of place and pride for Ellsworth residents and visitors, educating attendees and participants on our collective heritage, selling opportunities for area entrepreneurs, small business owners, and downtown business owners, and it's an annual fundraiser for the Heart of Ellsworth's annual budget. So this year, we had a new add-on, which was the festival market that took place down in the Franklin Street parking lot that's next to Merrill Park. There were 12 food vendors that participated, and we had two nonprofits who also joined in. We had many vendors that reported selling out of products, and downtown businesses reported record numbers of folks in their shops and in their eateries, and downtown numbers were up over the same weekend in past years. So we sponsored, and we had more than 10 sponsors and businesses in the area that helped to support the event, and overall, the event really heavily focused on marketing the downtown, and we had a bunch of different avenues that we marketed around the state with calendar listings and press releases, and MailChimp news blasts, and all sorts of Facebook and other social media events. But the real overall thing is to get people to keep Ellsworth top of mind when they're looking for things to do and places to go, and we want them to think Ellsworth first when considering where to spend discretionary income. And addition to the outlets above, we listed on the event, we were on 11 different area calendars around the state, and additionally, the festival market, participants and vendors did a fabulous job of cross-promoting the event around the state to their social media followers and customers sending out newsletters and posting on social media events. All of the online resources, links, I'm going to send this around to the councilors afterwards so you actually can click on those and watch some of the videos and some of the press that we received. Overall, the market attracted more than 350 people to downtown Ellsworth on Saturday of the event, and we had virtual participants for the tasting, we had 78 folks, and then for the historic talk, we had 32. And the tentative 2022 event date is November 11th through 13th. So at this time, I just wanted to ask if councilors have any questions about the overall event, or any sort of, anything else pertaining to Heart of Ellsworth?
Yeah, I thought it was great. I came down and I couldn't find a parking spot in City Hall, and I was really happy about that. And I walked over there, and it was great to see the vendors there. I would just like to see the whole thing in person instead of, I don't know, do you have plans for that next year? I think that would keep more people here for dinner and everything else. What do you think for next year?
For next year, and actually even this year, this was our second year doing the hybrid situation, and again, with a small staff and very active board, it's difficult for us to try to plan solely for something in the event of it being all in person, and then for everything to be shut down, and then for our event to not happen. So that's why we've done this hybrid approach of trying to bring back in person. In 2020, it was all virtual, with the exception of picking up the cider and cheese bag. But yes, it is the board's hope that next year, we'll have, be able to bring back the in-person tasting, and there's a couple of other ideas that Todd Little Sebold, who sort of, you know, conceptualized the festival back in 2018, has come up with, so we'll be executing those as well. And the one last thing, I just want to thank city staff for helping us sort of organize the use of the parking lot, and street sweeping as well inside the parking lot, making the space look tip-top for all of these folks who, a lot of them had never been to Ellsworth before. So it really, we put on a great show for folks from out of the state and folks around the state that came, and people were really excited about the event. So we did have beautiful weather, and that was definitely a feather in our cap, probably wouldn't have been as successful, but no matter what, it was a beautiful event in downtown. So thank you all for your support.
Other comments?
I'd like to speak to you tonight. My name is Steve O'Halloran. I'm a concerned citizen of Ellsworth, not just a citizen. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about some of the valuation fight with Walmart. It really pains me to see what has happened with this valuation and this fight, and recently I saw the appeals board agree to ask Walmart for its sales figures. I think they're overstepping their ground. If you ask one business for their figures, you need to ask all of them for their figures, and I don't think the figures, what they're doing with their property, has anything to do with the valuation. I believe they're overevaluated. There is a process to go through, yes, Walmart has the reputation of appealing all taxes everywhere, I agree. However, to cross that line and ask an Ellsworth business to produce their sales figures is just wrong. Absolutely wrong. I speak as a citizen tonight. We have this young lady here that just spoke, doing everything to bring business to Ellsworth, and we got this big public fight against Walmart and others of being over-assessed. And then to cross the line and to ask that business for their sales figures is wrong and is sending the bad message about Ellsworth as being business unfriendly. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, seeing none. Item eight, presentation of awards. First is Eric McLaughlin.
I'm going to do this slowly so you're here for another half hour. Certificate of Service to Eric McLaughlin, in recognition of your 15 years of service as equipment operator for the Ellsworth Public Works Department, your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth, presented this 15th day of November, we're presenting it this month, we're able to be here. So I appreciate you coming in, absolutely, this time of year reminds us even more so how important you are. Thank you.
And then the city of Ellsworth proudly presents a certificate of service to Amy Weishardt, in recognition of your five years of service as director of the Ellsworth Public Library, your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth, presented this 20th day of December, 2021. And Emily.
She is not here, so.
So I'll read Emily's. Emily Finson, in recognition of your five years of service as dispatcher for the city of Ellsworth Police Department, your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth, presented this 20th day of December, 2021. We'll make sure she receives that.
She's actually dispatching right this minute.
You want me to run over?
Yeah.
All right. Unfinished business, item number nine, council order number 122001, request of the Public Works directed to award an engineering contract for the improvements at the Branch Lake Dam tabled at the November 15th, 2021 council meeting.
I forgot it was at the top of the list. So, thank you. On Thursday, November 4th, the city of Ellsworth accepted proposals for engineering work on the Branch Lake Dam project. The requests for qualifications were sent to 10 engineering firms, and two proposals were received. After review of the proposals by the review team consisting of the city manager, myself, the water superintendent, and the watershed steward, the recommendation is to award the project to GEI Consultants, Inc., tonight. It appears from the proposals submitted that GEI has more experience with dam work and this type of geotechnical work than the other engineering firm. The full proposals, you've got in your packets kind of a modified version of the proposals. The full versions are available at the city clerk's office. And that's basically what I'm here for.
Council Helen.
Could you give us, or maybe me, a little background about what it, the scope of the whole project? I read this. What are you expecting to spend beyond this?
So that's the question. That's part of why we're hiring the engineering firm. So if you looked in your packet, there was kind of a list of the general concerns. So the dam was built in 1901, the city of Ellsworth took it over, oh my God, I can't remember whenever, we took over, I think the 1940s or 50s, somewhere in there. And it's a dam at the end of Mill Dam Road at Branch Lake. So it was rehabbed back in 19, or sorry, back in 2000, the concrete section of the dam. The adjacent to the concrete section of the dam is an earthen section, or an earth section of the dam, is held back by metal sheet piling. The metal sheet piling is essentially rotting at the frost line, and there's holes in it, and the lake is leaking through the sheet piles, through the rock and dirt, and coming out the other side of the dam. Those repairs need to be made. There are some safety concerns with, safety and security concerns, with people accessing the concrete section of the dam when they shouldn't be on it, through gates and stuff that people break. The biggest portion of what needs to be done is that earthen section, though it's, can't remember, 90 feet, something like that, I think. But it also needs, it needs a geotechnical review. It's, in the last few years, the earth has actually sunk, and so we want to hire an engineering company to review that, come up with a repair plan, and see what that's going to cost so that we know what we need to do going forward.
Do you have any idea, with your background of what you're talking about?
So, yeah, so originally, we, I was going to, I was hoping to do something, I'm going to guess, probably, oh, this day and age deal is a good question, guessing it's going to be, I'm going to say 300, 325, maybe, depending on what they find.
Over and above the engineering.
Over and above the engineering.
Is there any concern about hiring a Portland firm over a Bangor firm, cost-wise?
Cost-wise, they were pretty equal.
But extras and things, are we getting charged out of Portland instead of Bangor?
So the, there will be some costs associated with, you know, potentially if they had to drive up from Portland versus Bangor, and we weighed that as part of our decision-making process, but we felt that GEI is a geotechnical firm, they have more experiences with dams, they do dams for Black Bear Hydro, they do dams all over the state, and so we just felt with something of that nature, which geotechnical engineering is kind of a specialty, that we were more comfortable choosing the people that had more experience.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions, comments?
Oh, the other comment, just to kind of, the dollar amount, it was, it's a not-to-exceed amount, so we may not end up spending that full amount, or that's my intention.
Move to approve the request of Public Works directed to award the Branch Lake Dam engineering to GEI Consultants, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $95,000, with funding coming from bond proceeds.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you all.
Next item is the consent agenda, but we have no items under that, so we will move on to new business. Item 10, which is public hearing in action on the following applications for new and/or renewal of the following licenses. Finelli's of Maine Incorporated, 12 Down East Highway for renewal of a city Class B license Victorli liquor arcade, and renewal of a state restaurant liquor license malt and vinus. And these are all in order? Excellent. So this is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Does anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of Finelli Pizza Rio.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Ellsworth C.I.L.L.C.D.B.A., Ellsworth Comfort Inn, 130 High Street for renewal of a city lodging license. This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody want to make a comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Counselors.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve business licenses for Comfort Inn.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Item 11, council order number 122002, discussion in action on city membership of the Frenchman Bay Regional Shellfish Municipal Joint Board, which was tabled at the November 15th, 2021 council meeting. I distributed some information via email, and I'm going to turn this over to Council Blanchett, who's been representing us, and then I know Mr. Parada is here as well, and some others to discuss.
For the, I want to say, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, please, but roughly 10 years, Ellsworth has, Ellsworth, yeah, let me, okay, Ellsworth has been a member of the, of this board. There's a total of seven communities, and it's all about the clam flats in the local area, LeMoyne, Hancock, Sullivan, Stuben. Stuben's not in it? Okay. All right. And probably a couple of others that I'm missing.
LeMoyne, Sullivan, Sarancho.
All of those communities have clam flats. Ellsworth has, I believe, one, but it's at the outlet of the wastewater plant, where it comes out in the river and is, well, not harvestable. The last year, Ellsworth pulled away as the administrative community, and that went to Franklin. And for the $3,000 that it cost Ellsworth to remain a member of this, there's a question as to what we're getting for $3,000 now. Ellsworth was part of the committee originally to help get it going, and over the last 10 years, it has gotten going now, and with Ellsworth having no clam flats, the question is, do we want to spend $3,000 a year to remain in this group?
First of all, I'd like, my name is Gary Edwards. I represent Sullivan on the municipal joint board, have been representing Sullivan since their inception and through the whole process and the 10 years that we've been in operation. Excuse me. I want to thank Mark for letting me know this was going to be on the agenda tonight so we could come and do a presentation. I want to give you a little history of how we came about to do this. In, leading up to 2010, when we formed, there's a lot of flats around, around Frenchman's Bay, and traditionally has been a huge resource for saw shell clams, and meets the needs of this area and the other states. For several years prior to 2009, much of the state outside of here had huge blooms of red tide, and the majority of flats in many blooms of red tide, and the majority of flats in many, many communities were, were, uh, closed because of the safety of the red tide, uh, blooms that were happening. Fortunately or unfortunately, uh, most of the flats around, around Frenchman's Bay are in estuaries where the red tide doesn't get up all the way into the bay, and it's not a problem, so most of our resource was open. Unfortunately, none of the communities that now are part of this had, uh, been able to manage their own local shellfish. State of Maine, any, any, uh, ocean community has an option to work with the state to manage the shellfish harvest or let the state do it. Part of that commitment, if you decide to do it, is, uh, enforcement, and that became a problem for a lot of the small towns. So what happened in a period of about six years is every clamor that couldn't clam anywhere else in the state of Maine came and, and dug everything they could here, took it home. And by 2009, our resource around the whole of Frenchman's Bay was just about gone, and, uh, the communities and the industry were faced with, what do we do? And, uh, there was one other region that had started down in the Georges River region, and it was working very well for them. So, uh, some of the harvesters got together, and some of the municipal people joined them, and then we started a broader conversation. And the conversation was, which communities would like to participate in this? And, uh, at the time, I was involved, and a number of others were involved. Ellsworth got involved because Steve Beatham was a council member at the time, and he also worked for Maine Shellfish. And, uh, Steve and, so he had talked to the manager here and some of the, some of the staff, and, uh, eventually it got to the point where we decided we wanted to move ahead and see if we could make this work. And the, the committee that actually put it together met upstairs pretty much for a whole year, and was made up of representative for each of the other s- six towns, and the, uh, economic development director, the, uh, finance director, and Steve from the city of Ellsworth. And what we put together was, I mean, it was very apparent that we weren't worried about a few clammers making a couple bucks. We were worried about a huge resources that was in very danger of a total collapse and was almost there. So we were looking at, uh, an ec-, an economic development and habitat restoration program, and that's what we have, and that's what we've been doing for seven years. Now, I'm not going to read this whole thing, but you get down, uh, I want to explain a little bit how it's set up. Uh, if we were just an individual town, the board of selectmen or the council would be, uh, the governing body for the program. And then, a, a resource committee is made up primarily of harvesters and interested people. But because we're a region, we had to come up with an interlocal agreement between the seven communities. And each community puts a member on the, what's called the municipal joint board, who was in the governing body. And then we have the resource committee that, uh, makes recommendations to the, to the, uh, joint board on where we need to go and what we need to do. We also, uh, have certain responsibilities for licensure, cer-, the, the, it's actually an ordinance that all seven towns passed at their town meeting, and then, uh, put together a plan of what we were going to do. One of the first really big issues when, when we got going was, we had 610 acres of prime clam flat that were told, closed because of local pollution. It might have been a septic system, it might have been any number of things. So, uh, that's a lot of resource that was unavailable. And then there was the issue of bringing the clams back. So over the last 10 years, uh, the resource committee, working with other agencies like the Soil District, like the Planning Commission, like the Resource Conservation Development Program, uh, have found grants to mitigate some of the issues, and when we got the pollution issues taken care of, we start, and at the same time, we started attacking the, uh, the issue of whack of resource. And, uh, the very first steps we took to increase, increase the resource was a rotational system of closures so that, uh, the flats could, could, uh, bring themselves back, uh, that there was no digging for a period of time so that, so that reproduction could, could bring back. Most recently, we've been working with, well, Mark Whiting's over there and, and, uh, Down East Institute down in, in Jonesport, Beals, uh, on a, on a pretty major reseeding program so that not only are we letting Mother Nature bring the clams back, we're helping. And that's been very successful. So I think what we're encouraging the council to look at is, uh, right now, we have like 61 diggers in the seven towns. I think eight of them are yours. But the, I think the bigger picture is, we're providing a resource that, uh, how many people have never had fried clams at Jordans? Um, Maine Shellfish is down there sending these clams all over New England. Uh, economically, uh, what, what has been accomplished in the seven years, and it's on second page, in, in 2009, the previous 11 years, uh, 286,000, almost 287,000 pounds of clam sold to dealers, and they had a value of, of, uh, where's my, uh, maybe I didn't get that in there. And then, this year, or the next 11 years, um, it's, uh, jumped, more than doubled, 476,000 pounds, and an 11-year average of $958,000. Four out of the last five years of over a million dollars of clams have been sold to dealers in this region that came out of those seven towns. So I, I guess what I'm saying is, what is Ellsworth getting out of it? For $3,000, uh, your businesses are getting a product to sell to the visitors that come here. Also, you have, uh, dealers that are, or, that are, I mean, diggers that are making a living here, plus diggers in the other seven towns that are making a living. And, uh, I guess, it's been a very successful, successful program. And, uh, I guess I would ask, what is the advantage to Ellsworth not to belong for $3,000 and support an industry that is really very important to the total economy of this region? Now I'll be quiet and take any questions you might have.
Gary, do you have page two? They only have one page.
No, it's on, it's on the back, isn't it?
No, it's...
It didn't copy.
But everything you said was on there.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
It's fine.
When I ran that off, I, I was about two, two miles down the road when I remembered those, and I went back and ran it off, and I, my machine failed me.
That's fine. Counselor, Councilor Caplan.
So with the, you said seven Ellsworth residents that are clam diggers of the 61, if we don't do this, do they still get to use the flats?
No.
Well, probably not, but I mean, yeah, and that's...
DMR would have to change some rules, which they haven't done yet.
Yeah.
I just, I met with Hannah from DMR this afternoon, and she says no way...
Can you, excuse, no, no, it's fine. I'm, I'm not cutting you off, I just, because people are watching, they can't hear you, so if, if you don't mind going up to the podium, no, you can speak.
I can answer that.
I just need you to speak up there so that everybody can hear you.
When Gary's done, I'd like to just speak for the residents a little bit.
And the other thing I forgot to mention is, uh, recreational diggers, they sell recreational licenses both to, uh, residents and non-residents. And even though you're no longer the red, the, uh, administrative community, you have the ability and do sell recreational licenses to your citizens and their, and any visitors that come here. And this is pretty extraordinary because the amount of, of resource available in seven towns, uh, is, is pretty huge for, how much is a rec license now? 20 bucks, something like that? And, uh, I mean, now, to answer your question about the, about the, our, your diggers, uh, we have to have a certain percentage of our commercial diggers, uh, licenses available to non-residents, and that's 10%. And, uh, that we would do, and, uh, because we have to. Depending on how many diggers there are that are non-residents, if there's more than the 10%, then everybody goes into a lottery and drawn from a hat to see who is going to get those 10%. There may be something we can do, but I don't know. I'll let Joe answer that because he's talked more to DMR about the licensing, but, uh, the program has been extremely successful, and I think you've got many businesses in this community that have benefited from it, certainly many, many residents that have benefited from it and can still benefit from it. So, uh, again, I'll ask my question. What would the advantage be not to belong? If you don't have any questions, thank you very much for your time.
So just to clarify, if Joe Schmo from Ellsworth, Maine, has been getting his clam digging license and using the flats, if we don't continue to participate, he will not have access to those flats according to the Department of Marine Resources?
He'll have to go into it. If, if he can get in the lottery and win one of the spots for, for the 10%, then he can continue with his license.
I don't know if I'd want my family's livelihood dependent on a lottery.
Counselor, his.
Okay.
I guess I, this is...
For me or for Joe?
Oh, I don't, I don't know. Um, so if seven or eight families in Ellsworth count on this for their livelihood, out of 61 total families, I mean, it's basically one-seventh, so even though we don't have clam flats here in Ellsworth, we're pretty equally represented in terms of who's actually doing the work. I just wanted to...
Oh, yeah.
Make sure I understood that correctly.
Yeah. Well, Joe Parada is chair and has been since the beginning of our Shellfish Resource Committee. Uh, he's the one that gets the guys together and the gals and, uh, decides on some of the policies, and then the joint board mulls them over and figures out what's best for the whole region, and I'll let him...
So, I don't know which, who answers, so I'll just ask the question, you can decide. Um, in terms of the Ellsworth residents, my understanding is that it, it goes by mailing address. So my question is, are, do you know, are these, um, permanent residents, or are they seasonal residents? Are these people that come in, um, and, and have residence temporarily, or, or not?
It's where they lay their head at night. They have to prove that they're a resident. When they come in to get their license, they have to, they have to show residency in that community. It may be an electric bill, it may be whatever, so...
Okay.
Well, to first address your question?
Can you, just introduce yourself?
My name is Joe Parada.
Thank you.
I'm from Hancock. I'm, uh, I'm the Hancock representative and the chair of the committee. First, to answer the, the residence thing, to, in order to be deemed a resident, you have to show that you've lived in the area for at least six months in any of the towns. You currently have seven bona fide residents. They have to show by driver's license or main ID or property ownership that they've lived here for a full six months before applying for a license. Um, we, there were some issues with that, um, up till a couple of years ago, but we flattened that out, I believe. Um, I guess I want to first start by talking about how Ellsworth actually gains from this. We, last year and the year before, we were over a million and a half dollars worth of harvest. Um, and this, this, this year, 2021, because of the price of clams is, went up probably a dollar over regular, over what they've been over the past few years for various reasons, uh, we're probably approaching $2 million this year. So those seven diggers, probably between them grossed well over $200,000 in direct payment to them as residents of Ellsworth. They spend nearly all their money here in Ellsworth, as do all the rest of our diggers in the other seven, six towns, because this is where everything happens. Um, not to mention the fact that our, our product goes through lots of worker space and is multiplied in incomes across the foods business in general. You know, people like Brian Langley, they sell clams. How many restaurants in this town sell clams? And they're, so, you know, just the six, there are 61 diggers that make substantial, if not all of their money, from harvesting, and at least four of your, your diggers are solely clam diggers, have no other, have no other source of income. And to get to the, uh, whether or not they can get a license if, if Ellsworth decides to leave, as of now, there's no mechanism for that to happen, except through lottery. By numbers, there's going to be one open space next year. That, this year, we have 63 regular licensed harvesters. So that was, that makes us, in the coming year, um, we need to allow for one more license to come from a drawing, because we have six diggers now that are grandfathered from the original program. So if, if we sold less than 60 licenses last year, there would be no licenses available for anyone, including if Ellsworth leaves, they will, those seven people will no longer have an income. Unless they move to one of our towns or find another job for, what, 15 bucks an hour? When these seven people are making over $200,000, I don't think that's, um, that's a good id-, I don't think that's a good idea for, for the city of Ellsworth or anyone. And of course, yes, these harvesters will still spend money in Ellsworth because we have nowhere else to go. So, yeah, so with, with licensing stuff, you know, it's like, you guys are basically deciding the income of seven people of your town and direct payment of, of over $200,000 a year should you've decided to leave the program. For, what, what's the percentage of $3,000? What's, what is the percentage of your town budget at $3,000? It must be somewhere in like .0001 or something like that. May, maybe a quarter per resident, something like that? I don't, so I'm just hoping you guys stay in and protect, uh, the income of your people and, and our program. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
So I'll just say that, I think it is a helpful discussion in terms of a follow-up from, um, the, the decision to not administer, which, which I supported, just because I don't think Ellsworth is the right community to do that. So this was a follow-up, and, um, I, I certainly did not have a good handle on, um, this program and what this looked like in the history of it. So I appreciate you sharing that this evening. Um, that helps. Would you like to, Councilor Caplan?
I personally would not be, like I said, willing to subject seven families to a lottery system where they may have one or two licenses, and then the other six families will be out in the cold. I'm not willing to do that, take away somebody's livelihood like that, that's just wrong. I'm not willing to do that, take away somebody's livelihood like that, that's just wrong.
Just also, before we get too deep in the discussion, this is a question related, this is an ordinance number fifty-seven, chapter fifty-seven. If we were to make a change to an ordinance in terms of repealing it, that would be a different kind of, we would need to post that and announce that particular discussion. So, I just, I just want to be clear that if there was a desire to repeal the ordinance, we would need to do that at another time, because we can't do that in this meeting, because it's not posted as such. Is that accurate?
Yep.
Can we make a motion today to continue participation?
Yes, this is just related to if we were going to dissolve the ordinance, we'd have to do that, but, yes. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on.
So, we can make a motion to not dissolve the ordinance?
Yeah, to just to remain, basically state, take, yeah.
I would like to make that motion.
I second that motion.
So, we have a motion and a second discussion.
Counselor Hall. On record, it's saying that seven families is pretty important to me. But three thousand bucks has been a lot more money spent for a lot less.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, because up until now, I've been the Ellsworth representative on the board, I'm going to abstain on this for many vote, just to avoid any conflict, either way.
And then, once we make a decision, this is a board that's still without a represent, representative we have not appointed, is that correct?
Correct.
We, we table that until this discussion, so that will need to happen in the next, next meeting.
When we get there, if you guys decide to stay in, I have one more thing to say.
So, we, motion seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed, so it's unanimous, we have one abstention?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Parada.
Well, first, thank you very much. You also need a representative on the clam committee. No one in Ellsworth of the Shellfish Harvesters has been willing to do that, and in previous years, we've had non-residents taking that position after you folks okay it. Kathy Picard here is, is willing to take that position and represent Ellsworth as a, as your Shellfish Harvester, and to represent Ellsworth on the Shellfish Committee, should you so decide.
God bless you, Kathy.
I'm hoping she may become the future chair as well.
So, that is something that, P I C?
P I C K.
That we can put on for the January agenda, and we'll post and take it up and formally endorse it.
Thank you for stepping up.
You can't back out, because it's on the record.
That's how I look at it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item twelve, council order number one-two-two-zero-zero-three, request of the Public Works Director to update the electrical service and wiring at the Highway Garage, including the reallocation of the capital funds to this project.
Good evening, councilors, Lisa Cyclich, Public Works Director, again. I'm here tonight to kind of explain a project and request reallocation of funds. In an attempt to proceed with the budget-approved on-demand generator installation project at the Highway Garage, it was determined that the electrical service in the facility would need to be updated and some internal wiring corrected for the generator to work the facility. We are thus requiring two things, one, to upgrade the service from a two-hundred-amp service to a four-hundred-amp service. That's the service that comes in from the road to the pole outside the Highway Garage. Right now is a small two-hundred-amp service. We are asking to upgrade it to a four-hundred-amp service. If the building were to be rebuilt today, it would have a four-hundred, or possibly even a six-hundred-amp service. So, it is significantly undersized. We're also asking to use the capital funding that was initially allocated for the generator project and the floor drain project to fund this electrical upgrade. In addition to the upgrade to the service size of the building and the associated new panel, main panel, the contractor is proposing to correct some deficiencies in emergency lighting, proper emergency exits, and GFCI receptacles. These deficiencies are all potential OSHA violations in a working maintenance garage. We have a good number of our receptacles that are not GFCI. The work also would include installing a separate service and updating the lighting at the salt shed to take the load off the main building. So, right now, the salt shed, everything comes into the main building, and then the main building feeds the electricity to the salt shed. We want to split it, so essentially, there'd be a separate bill for the salt shed that would take some of the load off the main building that's already undersized. This would also allow potential expansion or additional lighting in the facility as potentially we reorganize or future development of our pit and surrounding area. The funding from this project would come from the previously budgeted authorized capital improvement projects, like I said, for the generator and floors, and floor drain repairs. The floor drain project has run into a delay, having to do with the main DEP and the need for a certified tank installer to do the work. And we originally looked at doing this and put it on the capital improvement budget three years ago. The assumption was that the Highway Department could dig, put in a tank, and we could do the work to fix our floor drain issue. After discussions with the DEP, it appears as so, we have to have a certified tank installer, which is going to be a more costly endeavor, as well as a timeframe. It's not going to happen within this current fiscal year. So, I would like to request to use those monies to fix this electrical issue and then bring the floor drain project back in FY twenty-three. Basically, the two projects, originally budgeted for thirty-five thousand for the generator and twenty-eight-five for the floor drain project. So, using those two funds would fully fund this electrical upgrade that I'm requesting to do. That was a lot of information. What questions do you have?
Counselors.
What about the generator project?
The generator would then, so, this, this work would make it so that the transfer switch and everything is ready for generator, so the actual generator itself would have to come back in a future budget also. But we, it would allow us to hook into, we have two portable generators from, well, the Fire Department usually services them and such, but it would also allow us to hook into those, as long as those are not being used by some other facility in the city, if there is a major storm or outage.
Counselor Hall.
Share with me and the board what it would cost to add the generator to this request. I realize it's not in your capital budget, but what is the generator cost beyond this?
I think the original thirty-five thousand would have taken care of the transfer switch and such, so probably about twenty, I'm guessing, the actual generator.
So, another twenty would do the, at least one project of the two. The drain project has been pushed off.
Right.
But another twenty, and, and you had sixty-three-five approved between the two, correct?
Correct.
So, you're missing seventeen grand roughly to complete this?
Essentially, yep. And again, the twenty is, that's just a best guess, I would have to talk to an electrician or, or a generator vendor to find out exactly, but.
What size generator was going in there, originally?
I don't think we got to that level. Yeah, John Phillips came out, and we had some discussions, and then we never got to determining an actual size.
Is there?
No, no, go ahead, keep, no, keep asking.
Is, is there anything else in your budget that could be pushed sideways to do it all at once? Because it seems to me that when you start doing projects in phases, that one doesn't get done, or two costs more money.
We do have an air compressor project that has also been approved for out there, that had another ten thousand five hundred. So, there is some additional potential money there. So, yeah, I mean, I think there's also some, I think it would, it would be possible to potentially fund the whole thing with shifting priorities.
Is that fair to the operation? I mean, the, is the air compressor project more important than the power project, or?
I think a lot of them are equally important. There's a lot of deficiencies out there. The air compressor project is a safety also concern. We have a old pressure valve in there that we got a notice from the state inspector that needs to be replaced. So, they're all, they all have their concerns, all three projects.
Counselor Hanson.
My question is a little bit vague, but I don't know all the ins and outs of that building, and it sounds like there are sort of a lot of issues with it that you're trying to solve with these different projects, right, basically just to make them safe and manageable places to work. And I wonder, my question is, are these individual projects part of what you picture as the bigger overall plan for that building? Or are they more like, I guess what I want to know is, are we like band-aiding these things that are dangerous and bad right now, when really, we should take a step back?
And do a bigger?
And do a bigger thing?
So, this, this electrical wiring is the beginning and opens up the doors to the, the bigger plan. So, right now, everything's kind of wired in series, right? So, I, I put a picture of the garage in, so like, it draws off this bay, and then it goes to this bay, and this bay, and this bay, and this bay, and it's all kind of in a series. So, if you're in this one, and they're pulling too much power, they start popping breakers. This new panel will allow things to come out of this major panel, and this bay will be separate from this bay, and everything goes into one major panel that has the four-hundred-amp service, which is large enough to run the building.
Yeah, so you're saying, right.
So, it takes, it's not, it takes some of the drawdown out of it.
Yeah, so you're saying this project, sort of regardless of what you decide to do, or we decide to do in the future with the building, kind of makes sense for however we want to upgrade it in the future?
Right, it's, it's the beginning of a electrical upgrade project, it wouldn't be wasted money.
Okay.
One comment I would have is, you mentioned safety, regulations. Unfortunately, that's something that we hear a lot, and I think it's because we have a lot of things that have been neglected in terms of not acted upon, and that's not a blaming statement, it's just reality. And whether it's that building or other facilities. And it, if, we need to address safety and regulatory items, period. We fall in the area of neglect if we start ignoring them. So, I, I think, along with Counsel Hanson's, I mean, Counsel Halloran's comment, I think it makes sense to have clarity about what are those items that fall into that first, package those together and get the work done, and then look at the next item that, that makes sense in terms of the next stage for that, that may not be a regulatory or a safety, but enhances the, the workplace and makes it more efficient, et cetera. And I heard you say that, that there are a couple of items out there that are safety. So, I, I certainly am supportive of the request you're making tonight. What I personally would like to see is to have more information about those items that are still left, to say, what are safety, what are regulatory, and your recommendation in terms of then packaging them and getting authorization to complete the work on the heels of, of the electric, but to have that information so that we can make a more informed decision, but.
Right, so, I mean, so, one of the things, right, and the reason they're broke out into the way they are, is the generators, so, generator, the floor drains, and the air compressors, three projects, all three need to be done for safety concerns, right, which is why we got them hopefully funded, or, you know, potentially funded last year, or this year, I'm sorry. But they're all three different types of work. So, you know, electrician does one, a, the Highway Department was hopefully going to do the floor drains until we ran into the kink. And then the air compressor is more of like a mechanical services type of vendor. So, they're broken down so that we can get different types of services from different types of vendors, not necessarily because we shouldn't do them all, but more or less, you know, you don't want an electrician courting on plumbing work, and you don't want, so, that's kind of the way it was, why it was broken down, the way it was broken down. Doesn't mean, just even using the floor drain money, doesn't mean that it's going to go away and that we shouldn't do it. It's trying to get one completed, or a majority, if possible.
Counselor Lake, chat?
Lisa, an electrician is available more or less right away, just that within, let's say, a month?
Yes, so, it's all based on parts and pieces, right? As soon as he gets the okay, he's going to put the order in. It's a matter of, you know, when everything gets ordered and can get here. His intention would be to be in there this winter slash spring to have it done, yes.
And in this day of, day and age of equipment shortages, i.e. generators?
The generator portion, even if, I know there was, I know there's been a back order of generators, so even if it was included, it may, that could be the last thing to get here, anyway.
And that could be, well, like snowplow equipment, months and months down the road.
Correct.
Yeah, I agree with the chairman, to, to tie the two of them together. In my mind, it may not be a good idea right now, I'd, I'd rather get the safety items done first, and then.
And I mean, having this work done does open up to using some that we already currently own until the time that we go to the next phase, if, if that's, if you, if you do want to break it up into phases, so.
Did you, did you check with Efficiency Main, is there any?
I did, so I did talk to the electrician about that. He said that, he would definitely check with them to see if there's any potential rebates on the lighting. The biggest hurdle he sees with going through Efficiency Main is because the salt shed right now is fed from the Highway Garage. It doesn't have its own electrical bill, so we can't prove that we're saving money, because part of Efficiency Main is you have to say, okay, here's the electrical bill, we're going to decrease it by such and such percent by changing this. Because it's tied into the whole garage and doesn't have its own bill, it's going to be pennies compared to what the whole building produces, so. But he was definitely willing to check and have the conversation.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Captain.
So, I see that this is for four hundred amp, but do you anticipate any growth or need for a higher amperage if we're going down this road?
So, my long-range plan, potentially, yes. But I think we would actually probably be better off running in a second service if, if the long-range plan happened, like, so I think this would be okay for this particular building.
Counselors, what would you like to do?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to award the Highway Garage electrical upgrade project to Darren Richardson Electric, Inc., for an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars, and to fund the project from the reallocation. from the reallocation of funding for the generated project and the floor drain project from the capital improvement count.
You have the motion.
Second.
Doesn't it need the number?
Seconds.
Account 9090900-59012.
Yes.
Good with it. So we have a motion and seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? One opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
I'd like to go on the record as saying the only reason that I opposed is I'd like to do one complete project at once.
Thank you. Item 13, Council Order Number 122004, Request of the Finance Director to Approve the Main Housing Tiffs. This item was actually addressed in a previous meeting, um, so I would request a motion to remove it from the agenda.
So move.
Any discussion? All those in favor to remove the item? Unanimous. Item 14, Council Order Number 122005, Request of the Library Director to Use Capital Funds for Chimney Repair. Amy.
Good evening, I'm Amy Weishardt, I'm the library director. So I'm here tonight to request city council approval for our chimney repair project. Our chimney is aging and in need of repair. We did originally think it just needed some repointing. We had two masons who looked at the chimney and bid on the project. They both found a split in the, in the bricks, so they recommended a full rebuild of the chimney. We received two bids and we have selected the lower bid. And the total, that's from Norwood and Sons, that's in your packet, um, that was for $8,950. In their bid, they did not include any repair work they might have to do on the roof afterwards, so they, they won't do that work. So we did get a quote um from Sinclair Builders. They estimated that that might cost up to 1650. So we, for ancillary costs, we just built in a 1750 there for a total of $10,700 for this project. I'm happy to take any questions.
Is that the chimney that's in the boat room?
Um, yeah, that's in the older part of our building, yep.
Other questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the bid from Norwood and Sons for $8,950 to rebuild the library's chimney plus ancillary costs not to exceed $1,750 to be funded from the library's assigned fund balance for capital improvement.
You have a motion.
Second.
And seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 15, Council Order Number 122006, Request of the Police Department to Authorize Optional Arrest Powers. So. Thought you had the option, but whatever.
Good evening, Counselors, Glenn Moser, Chief of Police. So this is a, it's actually a little bit of a cleanup from, through, going through, as you all are aware, we're going through the accreditation process. And in part of that process, it was brought to our attention that our policy, dealing specifically with arrests outside of the Ellsworth jurisdiction, didn't meet the current standard in the state is legislative bodies have to grant optional arrest powers to their police departments to act outside of their jurisdiction. So we have many instances where officers are investigating crimes that lead them to neighboring communities. And we would need to rely on outside agencies for our officers to go and make arrests based on those investigations. We also have a lot of officers, several officers who live outside of the Ellsworth community, commute. Uh, and when they're doing so, if, if there were illegal activities that occurred in their presence, they don't have the authority to take action in those instances without this, this optional arrest powers. It was passed in 2000, the legislation was passed in 2003. And it wasn't until we did some research to realize that, that it had never been brought before the board for discussion. And so that's the request. It doesn't really change our motive, uh, our mode of operations outside of granting us the authority without relying on other agencies. So currently, if, if for example, we're investigating a crime and, uh, well, I'll just use a simple example of a shoplifting in Ellsworth and the, the individual lives in Hancock. In order to go and effect that arrest, we'd have to rely on an outside agency to accompany us. And with this, we would have the authority to go there and take our, take action on ourselves. And this becomes, you know, it becomes an issue when all agencies, law enforcement agencies are, are as alike or, you know, dealing with manpower issues and it becomes, you know, a timeliness matter for us to be able to affect the arrest and take care of and close our cases, you know, in an efficient manner. It's by no way opening the door for our officers to begin policing outside of the city of Ellsworth. It's simply not the case. This is just a matter of, of ensuring that when something does arise, our officers have authority to, to take action, police action. Well, can I answer any questions?
Counselor Miller.
And this is common throughout the state, all the, all the towns and cities are doing the same thing.
Yes.
Just to make clear, make that clear.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, you know, back in 2003, when the legislation was, was first passed, you probably, there were, you know, a lot that, that took care of it right then as an issue. And again, uh, we were under the impression that it was some, an issue that had been resolved years ago. Because we've, we've operated as though we had this, we had this authority. And it wasn't until it was brought to our attention that we needed to confirm and, and research and found that it never was brought before the board, so.
Any um, issues with um, insurance in terms of as long as, if, if the officers are operating within the scope, which this would be within their scope, I would assume that we don't have any problems with the coverage, insurance and all of that.
Yeah, that's, and that's the big thing with it is, is it gives the officer in the city all of the protections as if that officer were acting within the city of Ellsworth. So, um, so yeah, it affords all of that same protection.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request for the Ellsworth Police Department authorizing them to act outside the municipal boundaries of Ellsworth. This, this authority is specific to authorities in MRS Title 30-A, Section 2671.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? One opposed. Motion passes. Item 16, Council Order 122007, Request of the Police Department to Purchase Police Responder Pickup from Quark Ford.
Again, thank you Chair, Chairman, so Chief Glenn Moser, Chief of the Police Department. So if you remember back several months ago, uh, we came forward with bid requests and we split the bids and we went with Quark Ford, the Tahoe, because they had it on hand. We were able to get that and it's actually on, now on the road. And we opted to go with Darlings for the pickup, um, both of which needed to be ordered. Well, Darlings failed to meet the agreements of the bid. Their bid specs, they were granted 120 days for delivery. It's now well past 140 days. They have no vehicle. They've told us that they're not going to be able to get a 2021, which is what the bid was for. And what we've purchased equipment to outfit. And fortunately for us, Quark continued, even though they didn't win the bid, they continued with the order. And they now have the truck that they had ordered when they placed the bid for, for that vehicle. They have it and it's available to us. So I'm asking that we, the board grant Quark Ford the bid for the 2021 Ford F-150 Police Edition Pickup.
Seems pretty straightforward. One has it, one doesn't.
There's about a, there is a 200, I think it's a $297 difference between the two bids. Quark was a little bit more expensive. But the fact of the matter is, we have well over five to $6,000 worth of equipment that is specifically for the 2021. And whether that would be um, retrofit available for the 22, we don't know. Because we don't know the exact specifications of the 22. So we'd be, we'd be remiss if we didn't purchase the 21.
Counselor Halloran.
What would happen if you didn't buy this at all? It is, from an outsider's view, it seems like there's a lot of police cars parked in the parking lot back. So what would happen to your operation if this wasn't purchased at all? What's driving the need?
Well, aging of our vehicles. So we, our current fleet, we, we sit in pretty good condition as far as our mileage goes. And the reason vehicles sit idle in the parking lot is twofold. One is we've been grossly understaffed for the last several years due to manpower issues. So typically, when full staffed, there might be one to two vehicles at most, at most, sitting in the parking lot. With current staffing levels of two to three people down or people who are untrained, who are now riding with another officer, you've got excess, what appears to be excess vehicles.
So what staff is going to drive the move?
So the new one will be, will be worked into the fleet and one of the fleet vehicles is, is being removed. And the fleet vehicle that's being removed is going to code enforcement to free up the code enforcement vehicle, uh, which is currently the code enforcement, fire and life safety inspector vehicle to be used more freely by the fire department.
Thank you.
Counselor Kaplan.
Couple of questions. On the first quote that we got from Darlings, the net price was going to be $26,075 after the trade-in?
I don't have the quote in front of me, but.
And then looking at the, the final price on the Ford F-150, um, from, is this all Darlings or? Yeah. So the, the Ford F-150 from Quark, does that include the trade-in?
No, because if you recall back to the meeting when we discussed these vehicles and trade-ins, we opted not to trade any of the vehicles because the trade-in value was so low and the vehicles had more value keeping them within the city for other department use, like, like code enforcement.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the purchase bid to Quirk Ford of Augusta for 2021 Ford F-150 Police Responder Pickup for the amount of $35,647.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? One opposed. Motion passes. Item 17, Discussion and Action on Criteria That Will Be Used to Allocate ARPA Funds, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, Funds Sponsored by Counselor Hanson.
So at our last meeting, we approved the hazard pay for the fire and the police department. And that just got me thinking about the ARPA funds and how we're going to decide as a group together, how to spend that money over time. And I would feel more comfortable if we had a discussion where we came up with um, our own goals for the money or our own vision for how to spend that money. So I just did a little bit of reading on the treasury site or, you know, just to figure out what this money is supposed to be spent on. And ARPA funds can be used for basically five things. Public health measures, addressing negative economic impacts of the pandemic, replacing lost public sector revenue, providing premium pay for essential workers, hazard pay, as we said, and investing in water, sewer and broadband. So what I think personally about how we should spend the money is, I'm just from the standpoint of what I've seen as a family doctor and seeing members of our community over the last couple of years, is that um, mental health has taken a huge hit in our community, as in all communities, because of the pandemic. Of course, we've had um, economic trouble in terms of worker shortage, but I'm not sure that that fits in these categories. And then another thing I think that's really important to our community members is, is childcare. So I guess that was my thought process is, could we agree on some values or goals that will set a framework so that when the question of what to do with the money comes in front of us, then we have some framework with which to decide that. And then my only other, my only other thought about it and just open it up for discussion is whatever we want to use the money for, it may be beneficial to partner with local organizations to kind of get the most bang for our buck. So for example, if we say, well, mental health is important to our community and that's one of the things that we can spend that money on, would it make sense to partner with, for example, like AMHC is a local organization that already provides those services rather than us trying to reinvent the wheel on our own? Those are my basic thoughts about it.
So open it up.
I do believe there were a few court cases that allowed expansion of how the ARPA funds were spent because they felt that um, the federal government was not able to specifically dictate how you have to spend one particular type of federal funds as opposed to another. And I think I had included that link for all to see, so.
Yeah, I read, I, I had a different impression in terms of reading it through. There were, when, when the ARPA funds were released, what they, what they tried to, the government tried to tie it to was to say to any municipality, state or municipality that accepted the funds could not lower their tax base. So our rate that we had for last year, we would have to leave it there. And by accepting those funds, we couldn't change that tax base. And that court case is saying that's not, that's beyond the, the right of the federal government to dictate that part. And that two states had pursued that lawsuit and that that injunction only applies to those two states, not any other state that hasn't joined the suit, which is consistent with other suits that's been filed in other areas with CMS's issued rules around mandated vaccination where 13 states had received an injunction. It was overruled by another court because the other states hadn't bought into it. So I think there's, with, and, and I don't think Maine is likely to jump into that. So as it stands now, there is no injunction um, on that. And the use of the funds were not in question in terms of what Counselor Hanson just talked about. In terms of they, the funds can only be utilized for certain reasons. The tax issue, the tax base was a separate discussion unrelated to being, you have to demonstrate that you use the funds in a certain way. Otherwise, you end up having to pay that back, whether you're the state, municipality or a private business that received these ARPA funds. That, that's my, I'm just saying with my interpretation, I might.
Yeah, I, I kind of had that same interpretation, but I also was looking at the loss revenue calculator. And did we go through that as a city yet and figure out, use that loss reg, revenue calculator and figure out if we've lost revenue?
Well, our revenue last year from the previous year actually increased. But, but I don't know, I, you know, we haven't sat down and looked, you know, where those increases came from, whether they, whether they were COVID-related or impacted by COVID in any way. But, but revenues last year were, were up for the city.
If we use the ARPA loss revenue calculator, we can, that, that also opens up a whole nother group of things we can spend the money on if we did lose money. Including a generator, I hope she's got.
These funds, we do not have to decide until the end of '24, I believe. And then we have to the end of '26 to spend it.
And who knows where Omicron is going? Who knows where this pandemic is going? And how long we're going to be messed up, and booster after booster after booster, we don't know. And so to spend it all now, I think would be kind of crazy when we don't know what tomorrow is going to bring. And at the end of the day, do we really have to spend every last dime? Yes, it's money from the federal government, but it came out of our pockets just the same. It came out of all of us in the form of taxation. We've all paid our income tax. So I would say just sit on it for now and, and see where this road goes.
Yeah, I'm not, and I'm not advocating spending it all right now. I'm just advocating having a vision for how best to spend it, so that when questions come up, we have a framework to make a decision, instead of like, well, do we want to do that? Sure.
Yeah, I think we want to be real careful with how we spend it. Want to make sure that we need to, if we have to make improvements to the city, anything that would make our small businesses, you know, work doing, do better off and bring more business into the city, bring more revenue into the city in the future, I think that would be really an important thing for us to do, too, looking at ways to spend this money.
I don't know if there's some better format to have this kind of discussion, whether it should be tabled and rolled into a bigger, you had mentioned to me that there are, we'll be having kind of more budget-related discussions into the spring, so should it be tabled until then, so that we can wrap it into bigger discussions about what to spend money on?
I think that if the departments need money for something, they, they're really good about coming to us for it. And if they can wrap it into ARPA, every department has somebody that's very good at trying to find ways to fund it. And, you know, to come up with ways to spend money that we haven't developed the need for already, that they haven't come to us already, when we don't know where we're going with the pandemic, I just think that, you know, it's better to keep the money in our pocket until we absolutely need it.
I think that, and to answer your, your question, Ms. Hanson, I think, I mean, we could hold, at some point down the road, we could hold a workshop, a specific, you know, ARPA funding, specific workshop with the council for, you know, for sort of the creative, you know, spitballing of different options and different ways to, to expend those funds. That might, you know, that might lend itself to more discussion and more opportunity in, for people to prepare with specific ideas, you know, as far as the council goes, on how they, you know, individual council members would, would best like to see the funds allocated over the next four years.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, I mean, that sounds, that sounds fine to me. I don't want to, you know, this money is being given to us to benefit our community, and I don't, I just don't want to waste it. I want to use it in the way that helps the community the most, so.
So maybe if I could frame it this way, just as a suggestion that, because we have a couple of items that deal with ARPA funds in a minute as well, and so maybe we could just, if there's agreement that whatever ARPA funds remain at the end of this meeting, that we would follow that process in terms of using that venue to, to have a workshop and, and include. That way, it doesn't shut off the discussion for the remaining, remaining items, if, if that's okay.
It's fine with me.
I'm just looking for consensus, not a formal vote, if that's.
That works.
And then I think part of this discussion will likely continue into the other items, but it doesn't shut off that discussion for those items. Okay. Thank you. All right, then, we'll move right into item 18, Discussion and Action on Premium Pay, Hazard Pay for All City Employees Sponsored by Counselor O'Halloran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As some of you may remember, in the November meeting, there was a, a item to give a $1,000 bonus to police and fire employees for working through the pandemic. I voted against that because I didn't feel that that was a, a fair shake for all employees. And when I say all employees, I'm told there's approximately 100 employees outside of the school department. Fair to say. And I'm told that in that voting process, approximately 32 people received a bonus. Is, is that?
Yes, yeah, I think that's about accurate. Yep. To police, fire, and dispatch.
Okay. So that leaves 68 people, thereabouts, maybe it's 65, maybe it's 69, that were left out of that equation. I'm about fairness. I, I was against the bonus, but I feel that if we have given it to some, we need to give it to all. Everybody worked through the pandemic. If there was somebody that needed some special recognition for some effort, I understand. But everybody had their lives changed with the pandemic, whether it was their work schedule, or their not-work schedule, or their lifestyle changed. Everyone was inconvenienced. And if we bless the police, fire, and dispatchers, it's my request that we bless all employees with the same for fair and equal treatment across the board.
So the only question I have is going back to what you said the last time, Manager Moser, and that was that you had this discussion with your department directors, your leadership, and presented them with an opportunity to come forward if they felt that they wanted to request. Has any of the, have any of the directors come forward with that request?
Yeah, there were a couple of department heads that were going to submit requests, but when this agenda item came up, we basically told them to hold off at this point to see what, what the council's decision was made.
Okay.
There has been some interest. And I think, I just, I would like to just elaborate a little bit on, on what Mr. O'Halloran was saying, and, and there were, you know, there were considerable concessions made outside of police and fire and dispatch. And so that was part of the analysis that was made when the decision was made to come forward with hazard duty pay for first responders who didn't receive any concessions whatsoever during the early stages of the pandemic. I also would agree wholeheartedly in fairness, and I think that the current state of the pandemic and the last year plus, beyond the early stages, which is what a lot of that early, the last recognition was for the early stages of the pandemic, when there was so much unknown about exactly what we were facing, as opposed to the dangers of today, which still, still exist. We've had many more employees contract COVID now than we did, you know, early on in, in the pandemic. So the reality is that there is very much still a danger and a concern for all of our employees, and they, they are putting themselves at risk, as are, you know, everyone else in our community as well.
Counselor Hanson.
Well, I don't want to make this sound like I don't value all the employees, because I do value all the employees. I do think that although there are a lot of uncertainties with the pandemic, we are not where we were back at the beginning. We didn't have vaccines at that time. What I heard the fire and police people say is they also didn't have adequate protective equipment at that time. I worked in healthcare at that time. Even though we are seeing more COVID right now, it is, it's not dangerous to me in the way that it was back then, and it's more known, and we have more treatment options. So I don't really think, even though, yes, COVID is still here, even though, yes, there is a new variant coming, and who knows what will happen next, we're nowhere near where we were back then. And we put those guys in really unsafe situations because we didn't have any other choice. And I think that is different. I think that is different than if you could work from home or work in an office where you weren't encountering the public.
Counsel Miller.
Just to follow up on that, what Counselor Hanson just said, I agree with her. But also under ARPA, there was a stipulation for an essential worker that can, that can be paid by the ARPA funds. And that, that means you can't be a teleworker. So as long as we identify everybody under ARPA, their definition of an essential worker, I'm okay with it.
Which, early on in the pandemic, when we began to come back to work, the, almost virtually all city employees were issued essential worker documentation, because if you remember when there was lockdowns and travel ban restrictions and everything, those letters were issued to, to virtually all of the city staff. And certainly, you know, there were, there, again, as I stated earlier, earlier, and early on in the pandemic, there were a wide variety of, of, you know, optional work types of environments that took place. Some from work from home, some were, did come in, but they were in a facility that was essentially, you know, they were by themselves, or very few other interactions with, with employees, so.
Counsel Keppler.
Looking back, I mean, initially, when everything was shut down, we didn't even have a case in Hancock County for a long time, not a single case. And then, once we started getting things backed up and running, we had a handful of cases. Now we have anywhere from 50 to 80 cases on any given day with vaccinations that although they may decrease severity, they are ineffective as far as fully preventing COVID-19. They can actually, you can have it, just not have symptoms, and still be transmitting it. And so looking at that, and, and not knowing whether the boosters are going to be effective, I would say I have no problem with, you know, just putting this out there, as long as it's, it's a one-time thing for, for the city employees. If we've already given it to some of them, I think it's fair to do it for everyone.
Counselor O'Halloran.
I just want to state that this isn't, in my mind, this is leveling the playing field from what's already happened. It's not because we have new variants out there, new unknowns. I, I believe that what I'm hearing is so true, and, and we all probably have this conversation at home, that we have all adjusted to the news media and all that's going on. And it was so foreign to everybody, everybody freaked. And now it's worse than ever statistically, but we're all adjusting. We all understand that it is what it is. And my, my motion, or excuse me, my, my discussion here is, is simply, it's, it's not because it's still going on. It's because we blessed some employees and valued them above others, and that bothers me. I, I just, from the beginning, felt that if you do for one, you do for all. In this case, it isn't such that, let's say that we had a firefighter that had done a heroic effort and needed some special recognition. I'm all for special recognition, but it seems that this is a broad, a broad item. And to value the, the firefighting crew over the city hall crew, over the guys plowing the snow in the winter, it just, it, it didn't seem like fair and equitable to me. And that's what this is about to me, is to level the playing field for these employees, to let everyone know that everybody's important in their job, not just some.
Counsel Blanche, then Counsel Hanson.
Fair and equitable would have allowed everyone to have the ability to work from home. Police and fire were not given that choice. They worked a full work week. They were not allowed to stay home. The city hall was closed. Other city employees did have the ability to stay home and work from home and stay safe, or as safe as, as one could. And that is why I voted for the bonus for police and fire, and the same reason why I would not vote for a bonus for the other employees. They have had a lot of time off. Police and fire did not.
Counselor Hanson.
Yes, and I value all the members of the city workforce equally, but I also think this is intended to be hazard pay for people who put themselves at greater risk, and that's just the reality of what that was back then. I also think, again, there's, there's a certain amount of funds that were being given to use, and I just would rather think about ways to support the community as a whole using that money.
And I go back to my question earlier, because for me, the request, we were forced in as a community to make a decision, because the county decided that they were going to provide hazard pay to first responders. But they did that contingent upon the participation of municipalities. And if municipalities didn't participate, the county wasn't going to provide that funding. And I expressed my opinion about that. I think that was wrong to force that kind of discussion. But it was what it was. So the first responders in this community came and did a presentation, and you had indicated at that time that the same offer was on the table for the other department. For me, that's the process that I would like to see. It's, I'm not opposed to having the discussion, but I would like to understand the need based on the facts from the departments, in terms of what did they go through? What are they recommending? Why are they recommending it? To have just a better understanding. And, because I think that, that process replicates what took place with our first responders in terms of the presentation that we heard here connected to, to the county. So for me, I'm, I'm not taking it off the table, but I'm not quite there yet to support it without having that information. And based on what you had offered to the, your, your department leaders, that's, that's the process that I would like to see play out, and we can certainly take it from there if we need to. But that's, that's my perspective.
Other comments? Counsel Keppler.
So we're talking roughly 60 employees, give or take?
Yeah, 60 to 70.
And we received roughly $440,000 in our first installment of ARPA. We'd still have plenty left over if we had leveled the playing field for everybody. You know, I mean, we still have Plexiglas standing between employees and the public, because they did come back before the vaccines were available. So I personally wouldn't have a problem with using a small percentage of that to kind of thank our employees for being there for us before the vaccines were available, when things were still unknown.
The part that's missing is that, with, correct me if I'm wrong, but with police and fire, there's, there's criteria in terms of service duration, hire date, things like that, correct? It wasn't everybody, it was everybody that was a certain date, correct?
Right, for, well, for the, yeah, so for the, when they brought that forward, they were, they were mimicking what the county had brought forward for requirements. So the, so, yeah, so that's what you were looking at, and the, the council that night voted to essentially abandon the dates and just look at the, you know, look at the, the fact that they were employed. Now, there were certain, there were a couple of, not everybody in the police department, for example, is receiving even the $1,000 from the city, because they have only recently begun to work there in the last three or four months. It's the individuals that have worked there over the last year and a half.
I wouldn't have a problem tying. I wouldn't have a problem tying the same procedure to the other employees. Matter of fact, I would, I would recommend that, so that, again, at the end of this night, everyone got the same treatment from their employer.
Councilor Miller.
But, but again, with what Chair Hamilton said, everybody should be identified as an essential worker. All the departments should make the presentation that the police and fire department had to, had to make, and explain how their, their personnel were essential employees, how they regularly had in-person interactions, how they regularly physically handled items that were handled by the public, and, and just to be fair with the police and fire department.
Is there a motion?
I may need some help with the motion. This would be my first time.
We can work through it. That's what the clerk's here for.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Counselor, to approve premium pay for all employees outside of the school department with the same parameters that were used for the fire and police. If it was January 1st of 2020, I'm not sure what it was, but thereabouts. And the monies come from the ARPA funds. That would level the playing field.
Do we need the dollar amount specified?
I haven't got a fair, accurate amount of employees.
Just if you said $1,000 per employee.
$1,000 per employee to equal the previous bonuses, and exclude the school department.
Did you get that?
Thank you for your help.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would question the $1,000 figure, because if, if you were to give a bonus, then you, by union contracts, you would also have to then add into their retirement or any other, or would it be a flat $1,000?
It would be a flat $1,000, just like other stipends that they are issued out their contract that do not include those benefits.
And who would pay the taxes?
The employee.
Okay.
Question. Would we have to match the payroll taxes?
To apply the tax.
Which is the same that's happened with the fire and police.
Further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion fails. I would like to go back and just say that I still would like to bring this forward, carry this forward into the next agenda item, add it as an agenda item, and have department directors present to revisit the motion based on that presentation.
Yeah, I will, I will address it with department heads. I, I don't know that we're likely to get them for January, because our January meeting is a quick turnaround. I know at least one or two department heads that may already be prepared and ready to go, so that may be possible, but others might be for February.
All right. Item 19, request that all ARPA American Rescue Plan Act funds be returned to taxpayers as a ratio of taxes paid after all city employees receive a $1,000 bonus, school department excluded, sponsored by Councilor O'Halloran.
Obviously, the $1,000 bonus didn't fly, but thank you for allowing me to at least bring that to everyone's attention. The, the item 19, I would like to see every stockholder slash taxpayer get blessed with these ARPA funds that remain. And the reason I say it that way is very simple. I realize that it's federal money. I realize that it has come to us because of a pandemic, but essentially, it's surprise money. And we have been, as a city, creating expenditures that are necessary, and we've been asking the taxpayers to continually fund that, making them, in my mind, a stockholder. This is a great opportunity to show our appreciation to the taxpayers, or quote, "stockholders." These are surprise monies, and I believe it would be honorable to return this windfall to the people that have supported this city. I don't believe this has ever been done. I don't want it to be, oh, let's just cut them a credit for next year's tax. I would like to see them get a refund as a percentage of the funds. So as an example, if there's $25 million in, in revenues, tax revenues, if that's the number, I can't find out, to be honest with you, roughly 12 and 1/2 million for the school, 12 and 1/2 million for the city budget, and there's $1 million, so let's set up a ratio, and let's bless the taxpayers that have supported this city as stockholders and continue to send money in, and send it back to them. It's a windfall for this city, and I would like to see that money go back to the stockholders of the city.
Council Blatchett.
ARPA funding doesn't allow it, period.
Find another way.
So, so with that in mind, I'm not even sure why this is on the agenda. We can't, can't break the law. You know, we, we swear to uphold the laws of the, of the state and the ordinances of Ellsworth, and I'm not about to go against them.
Are we sure of that? Isn't there a couple of cases that has tried that? And is there another way to do it? If you want to take that money for another way and, and refund some of the already paid tax, is there another way to do that? It's time that we, we took care of our stockholders.
It all sounds warm and fuzzy, Steve, but still, we aren't allowed to do it. It's as simple as that.
Unfortunately, I think the way they write the laws is we're allowed to take, 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 but it's really hard to give it back.
If I may, I, I think the way that we do that, Steve, is, opposed, rather than cut individual checks, I think the way that we do that is what Casey's asking, is that we come up with ideas. And if we come up with needs that the city has, things that the city has to have, has to do, and we're able to fund those with ARPA funds, rather than going to the taxpayers and putting that burden on the taxpayers to fund those needs, then that's the way that we use these funds most effectively to give back to the individual taxpayers of the citizens of Ellsworth, without actually being able to hand them a check. In addition, I think if you sat down and did the math and looked at all of the taxpayers in the city of Ellsworth, and you broke down that $800,000, the actual dollar amounts that they're going, that they would be receiving would be extremely minimal, and something that would...
That's okay. It's the thought. That's like saying a $5 birthday gift isn't appreciated. It's the thought. Find a way to give something back to every stockholder in this town.
So I, I agree with Council Blatchett, but I don't dismiss the idea in terms of the value back to the citizens. For me, it comes down to, I think that's our job to do the hard work, because it ends up being six of one, or take it out of this hand and then give it back in this hand, then take it back. When we come, get to the budgeting process, and there are expenditures that we need to approve, if the tax rate goes up because this council has determined that there's a need and we increase that, then we really haven't done anything for the taxpayers by giving them back this, this money. I think it should be inclusive of the total discussion of, of the budget. We know what the base is. We know where we started, and I think it's upon us, if we really want to give back to the taxpayers, that we consider it in its entirety. We consider the usage of what are the needs from, from the pandemic? What are these ARPA funds? And at the end of the day, can we leverage those, along with my comments about the school? The school has a fund that it started. Can we leverage those funds to decrease costs going into future years? So all of that said, at the end of this next budgeting cycle, do we make the taxpayers benefit from all of this in its entirety versus a one-time, let's give something back, and then we, in the budget cycle, and we just take it back immediately? So I think we have to do the hard work that goes beyond it and not just this, this one task. But I also, I don't believe we can do it legally at this point, and until that issue is resolved, I couldn't support it just on, on that basis.
How do we resolve that issue? Do we get legal counsel? Everyone says it can't be done. Do we know it can't be done?
Well, it can't right now, because the law says it. If, if, if you want to dispute it, then that's, I think that's a manager Moser issue. Personally, that's who I would...
Well, there's not support anyway, correct? I mean, I'm not getting, there's not support, even if it was legal.
Yeah, I go beyond, well, I just said, I mean, I go beyond that in terms of, for me personally. But I'm, I'm one person...
And the other consensus is, basically, there's not support.
I'd like to see us do some funding of projects that we've not been able to fully fund, such as, you know, doing some decent roadwork. Grant Street is still a mess. It's been a mess for years. Looking at finishing up Water Street, there's parts of downtown that, you know, you finally get it paved, and by the time you get around to it, it's been three or four years, and the 8 million people a year go right up that road onto the island, and, you know, you shouldn't have to take out your undercarriage just to get to work. So I'd like to see us maybe get some projects done that we haven't been able to get done in the past, so that maybe we can have a nice, smooth ride to work.
I agree with Councilor Kaplan, and if we can, Steve, if we can find ways to increase revenue to the city, that's going to help the taxpayers more than giving them a one-time small check.
Well, I'd just like to go on record as telling the taxpayers slash stockholders that I tried.
Do you wish to make a motion or just leave it at?
It won't support.
Well, that's fine. I just wanted to...
You can withdraw the motion.
No, I, I, there's no sense to go through the motion.
No, that's fine. I'm just, so there's no motion on the table, and if...
Dies for lack of interest is what I'm saying. Is that correct?
If no one's making a motion, then, okay. Item 20, Council Order Number 122008, request of the city manager to appoint Tony Dyer as city clerk and register our voters for the city of Ellsworth.
Just a little housekeeping business from last meeting, but she's graciously accepted, and as you can see, she's done an outstanding job so far, so.
That was a one-time deal.
Can we amend it, as long as she keeps the books like that?
That's what I was referencing. She didn't know what she was getting into. Let's, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman? Yeah.
There's a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, before you adjourn, if I, if I may, I just want to remind all the councilors that we do have a quick turnaround for our next council meeting, and with the holidays, so any agenda items or anything that you'd like to see, please get those in as quickly as you can to the city clerk, so that we can be sure to have an agenda appropriately formatted and posted prior to that next meeting.
Do you have a cutoff date on that?
I think it's, I think it's January, I think on my sheet.
Because we are a week earlier.
Yeah, because we're, the meeting's on the 10th.
I'll email out tomorrow. I think it's the 1st. I think it's next Thursday that we're done.
It's like tomorrow.
I don't have anything, but if I do...
We're usually the third Monday. We will be the second, we'll be the second Monday in January and the second Monday in February. Both of those are right?
Yeah.
Both of the third...
But this one's particularly quick, because it's the 10th, and it's already the 20th, so.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Surprising, it's unanimous.